Okay, okay. The meeting of the Montessorino City Council for May 21st will come to order. Is that loud enough? Okay, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Councilmember Alahi?
Present.
Councilmember Labouvet?
Present.
Councilmember Lawler?
Present.
Councilmember Luthold?
Mayor Turner?
Present. Are there any changes to the order of the day?
There are none.
Okay. So, our first order of business is a presentation to recognize Shelley Bersanti. We want to recognize her for her contributions and leadership to the American Cancer Society's Courageous Kids Day to help advance pediatric cancer research. Ms. Bersanti? Would you come up to the podium? Well, you'll come up here. So, with this plaque, we honor you for bringing joy and comfort to the kids with cancer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hug.
This means a lot to me. I appreciate the generous commendation for my work with the American Cancer Society, particularly around courageous kids. I'm a member of this community. Dan and I have lived here since 1990, so to be recognized by the city council in the city in which I live is especially poignant. Just to tell you a little bit about courageous kids, we do an event at Great America, and we've been doing it for the last 30 years, and it's for kids with cancer and their families. We do it in celebration of life and their survivorship. The last 25 years, Dan and I have been there with our families, celebrating with these kids. And Paramount's Great America gives them free admission to the park, and then they give them free lunch in the back in a special grove with donations from corporate partners and from individuals. We're able to provide the moms with special corsages and the grandmothers. There's a DJ that comes. They do water balloon tosses, hula hoop contests. They have a magician and a clown and balloon makers that make swords and hats. We have family photographers come and take pictures of all of the family. It's really to provide support for the families. They get to be together as a family outside of a treatment setting. They get to visit with other families and share resources, and it's really a celebration for them. So, I've been happy to be a part of it. We also now have expanded to be able to help with pediatric cancer research. We have, at the American Cancer Society, we're supporting 49 research grants totaling more than $25,000 specifically dedicated to pediatric cancer. So, no one should get cancer, but it's especially difficult when it happens to a child. So, that's what we are focusing on at the American Cancer Society. And I appreciate all the support for the city of, from the city of Montessorino and all of you for recognizing that, and for Gay Crawford for bringing forward my name. So, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Commendations to the council members.
I also want to personally express my appreciation for you. I've participated in team and training LeFumay and Leukemia Foundation. They regularly hold marathons. It's a great program to join if you want to train yourself to do walking and actually do marathons in San Francisco. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it all.
Thank you. So, anyone else? No? Okay. So, our next order of business is oral communications. Does anybody wish to speak at this time? Andrea, do we have any blue cards? No? Okay. We also don't have any written communications, so we'll now go to the consent calendar. We have five items on the consent calendar, which we will take in one motion. Does anyone on the council wish to speak on any of the consent calendar items?
Yeah, I had a question, a couple of them, I guess, on the warrants. Let me just, first of all, on the meetings, we had a proposal to do an ad hoc committee on the veterans memorial information. Is that going to come up at us later?
You mean the request for funding?
The request to set up the ad hoc committee.
Oh, yes, it will. And also, I believe embedded in his presentation was also an amount that they were looking to, for the city's sponsor, and I was just going to add that into the budget for the budget workshop.
On the warrants, if you could pull that, the warrant list. There was someone that is an expense for Joseph J. Albanese, Inc., for $471,000. It's a PMP project. I was trying to figure out what that was.
I could go ahead and answer that for you, if you'd like. That is the first payment on the city's repaving project for the summer, or actually the spring.
Repaving is on across the street, so all?
It's 17 individual street segments within the city. It's this year's pavement management program.
There could be more after that, or?
The contract is not to exceed $631,000 total.
On the monthly revenue and expenditures, I was just looking at. Revenue and expenditures, there's an expense for consultation, consultant fees, about $17,522. And I apologize, I should have probably called you beforehand, discussed this.
That would be the preferred method. Which page is it on?
Are you talking about the financial auditing services?
There's an admin expense.
Bottom of this page. Bottom of the first.
The bottom of the first page?
Bottom of the first revenues page, or expenditures page.
For contract services, and I'm still trying to find it also.
It's under administration for $17,522.22.
Unfortunately, I don't have the register in front of me, and Sue, our finance officer, is not at the meeting tonight.
Yeah, that's a contract, it's a consultant. Do you have some, do you have consultants somewhere?
We have many. We have services for design, well, actually, the design and engineering for the curb and gutter and for the resurfacing would be under the CIP. But we have also, you know, engaged engineering services for a number of projects that we're working on. You know, I'm more than happy to email you tomorrow with some more detail.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Labouvet?
Let's draw a request now. So, I just wanted to make a quick request. I went through this and dug through this revenues and expenditure report in quite a bit of detail, and actually came in, and Terry was kind enough to walk me through this report. So, I can sympathize a little bit with what you're doing. What was important to me in this report is really reconciling, you know, the forecast budget versus the year-to-date actuals. And, you know, the trend that I noticed in this report is that, you know, on the revenue side, it looks like we're around 400K behind. So, it means that, you know, there's 400Ks in collection to go, and we're in the 10th month. And on the expense side, we're like 1.3 million behind, which means that, which is actually good news. It means that we haven't spent all of the monies that we've allocated to spend. So, what is a little bit hard about this report to figure out is where are those next expenditures coming from? So, because in month 10, you would expect, hey, most everything should be around 83% in terms of budget recognition. So, you know, with the benefit of Terry and the finance officer, we were able to sort of track down that these things are located mostly in maintenance and construction, and that brings it back in line. And so, but going forward, you know, the comment that I'd like to make is that it would be nice if we had a little bit of commentary just to explain some of the bigger differences between forecast and year-to-date actuals. And if we could, what I would normally expect here is something like a waterfall chart, or sometimes it's called a financial bridge, that just highlights some of the bigger items, and that would help clear this up a little bit.
And we indicated that, starting with the last meeting in June, whenever there's, you know, these larger discrepancies, we'll add a little bit of a narrative to the end of it that explains. In this case, it had to do with the pavement management program, this year's street repaving or resurfacing, and the curb and gutter and resurfacing of the other three streets. We haven't expended, we've expended very little in terms of paying the invoices on those because the work just got started, and that's the reason why it looks like we have a lot more money to expend. So, once those invoices come in, that will be, bring that way down, one's not to exceed 633,000, and the other one is 500,000. So, what we chatted with this afternoon and said we would be more than happy to provide a narrative at the end that sort of explains it when there's a large discrepancy.
Okay.
So, in summary, it's actually good news. But a little further explanation would help, I think, people, even residents that are viewing these reports.
Okay. Thank you so much. Council, Mayor Protem Law?
No? No, I agree with Daniel. I think that that's a, or councilmember Labouvet. I think that's a, that's a good idea. It'd be helpful for me, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, we'll now move to public hearings?
We need a motion to do that.
Yes. Oh, we have to have a motion. Yes. Okay. See, nothing comes on my screen. No.
This is a request to speak.
Shall we just do it manually?
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Labouvet?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Turner?
Yes.
So, it passes 4-0.
Okay. So, we have, let me see, where are we? Okay. So, now we have our public hearings, and it's the 2019 to 2020 Rose Andrews Lighting District. Yes.
I need to recuse because I live in this district.
Okay.
Oh.
You have to go to the restroom. Okay, so Terry, do you want to, do you want to speak to this item?
This is just a routine item that, you know, the city council sees every year to conduct the public hearing and adopt a resolution overruling any protests and ordering the improvements and confirming the diagram and assessment for the Rose Andrews Lighting District, so that the good folks on Rose Avenue can continue to have streetlights and electricity flowing to them.
Okay. Do you want to take a motion? No? Nothing?
Public hearing, so you have to open the public.
Yeah, so you have to open the public hearing.
Yeah. So, is there anybody, anybody here that wish to speak on this item? Manit? No? He said he wanted to speak.
I want to know that.
Okay.
Nobody from public, okay.
You? Okay.
What are we paying for? Basically, just keeping the light on? I mean, the poles are already up, everything is up. They just change the bulbs, make sure the, and for the utility costs?
Yeah, so the city doesn't pay for any of it. The property owners all pay for it, and that covers basically that, if there's any maintenance that's required. But it is a set fee. We don't raise it every year, so they are paying the same fee every year. The majority of the property owners do have a right to protest, and we've never received that.
But that's fine.
Okay. That's it.
Yep.
Okay. So, let's now move to?
You have to vote. Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
So, do we have, do you have a voting? Do you have a motion button?
There's no, nothing.
Mine's not working either. Okay.
I keep forgetting because I don't see anything.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
It's unmoved.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawler.
Who did you call?
It was seconded by Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
The voting buttons?
Nope.
Okay. Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember, let's see, Councilmember Labouvet has recused himself. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Turner?
Yes.
So, it passes, reads her up.
Okay.
She may have rejected him.
Okay. So, are we all here? Yes. Okay. So, we'll now move to new business. And so, we have, the council will now consider applications for appointment for the 2019 to 2020 Montessorino Youth Commission and appoint the applicants to the youth commission. First off, I want to thank you for the time and energy you put in to putting together this fabulous and wonderful ice cream bar in the city of Montessorino. So, thank you on behalf of the council. There are actually five, there are actually 15 youth commission members who are appointed to serve a one-year term, and we have received 15 applications. And now, we'd like to hear from each applicant. When I call your name, please come to the podium and introduce yourself and let us know why you want to be a member of the youth commission. So, let me call our first applicant, Kusha Azim.
It's not here.
Oh, not here. McCoy Bushtiner.
Hey. Hi, I'm McCoy Bushtiner. The reason why I want to be on this youth commission is because I want to serve my community and also learn who else lives here and become closer and more attached with my neighbors.
Thank you so much. Next one is Avanya Costello.
Hi, I'm Avanya Costello, and the reason that I want to be on this youth commission is that I want to give back to my community, and with everything that the youth commission does, I feel like it can really make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige Craig? Smile, you're on camera.
Hi, I'm Paige, and I've been on this youth commission for two years, and I would like to continue to participate in helping the community.
Thank you so much. Jessica Gordino? Not here. Savannah Lynn?
Hi, I'm Savannah, and the past year was actually really fun to do all these projects, and I really wish to do it again next year.
Thank you. Ajay Madala? Your dad was here for the ice cream. What happened to him?
Isn't?
Oh, there you are.
Hi, my name is Ajay Madala, and I would like to be considered for youth commission next year. I was currently, I was on the, I was first assigned to the youth commission last year, and I enjoy working on these projects, and I have a lot of ideas, and I have a lot to offer to this community. And I feel that, that I have a lot of projects, and I have one that I can offer, sorry. I feel that I can offer a lot to the community in that I have a lot of ideas, a lot of potential, and I feel that all we altogether can get Montessorino youth more involved in the community and part of the town.
Thank you so much. Kate Markachek? Kate, not here? Oh, there you are.
Sorry, I was late. I was working. But I want to be, I've served on the youth commission for the past two years, and I want to go, become another, or a member of the youth commission again because I want to help serve our community and help it grow.
Thank you so much. Kavya Narayan? Kavya? Christian Nazal? Emily Neddon?
Hi, I'm Emily. Last year was my first year on the commission, and I had a lot of fun, and our commission altogether has really good ideas and really good opportunities, and I'm really excited, hopefully, to be on it next year so we can see that grow and hopefully pursue those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Arushi Saxena?
Hey, I'm Arushi. I was on the youth commission last year, and working with this group of people, we got a lot done, and I want to continue taking that into the future and see what we can do this year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Rohan Varma?
Hi, my name is Rohan Varma. Actually, I just moved here about seven, eight months ago, and this community's been amazing, beautiful, and really welcoming, and I want to give back and help make a change. That is why I'm applying to be part of this youth commission. I also want, sorry, I also want to help, I also want to help increase visibility among the youth and get them to, encourage them to help participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariana Yamudi?
Hi, I'm Ariana. I've been on the youth commission for two years now, one year as co-vice chair, and I've loved every minute of it. This year, I helped set up the hygiene drive, so I love seeing what our community can do for other communities and ourselves, and I love, I really hope that next year we can focus on building a stronger community between the youth and Montessorino as well. So, I really hope to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess that's. No? I called Alex Nickel.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Wait, did you?
Yeah. Did I miss you?
Alex Nickel.
Oh, Alex Nickel. I wish to sing if you were awake.
Ah, yes, of course. Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Nickel, and recently, I've been thinking a lot about my sense of place and my relationship with the places I live in. And I've been really honored for the past four years to be able to give back to my community and my place through the Montessorino Youth Commission, and I hope to, and really am excited to continue doing that next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, did I call everyone? Yes? Okay. So?
Here comes someone running in the back door.
Jessica Gordino.
So, not to be missed, Jessica Gordino.
Sorry.
Great entrance.
Perfect timing.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jessica Gordino, and I will be a ninth grader at Valley Christian High School next year. I was a member of last year's youth commission and was very excited about being able to have that opportunity. If reappointed, I want to do more volunteer work and try to make more of an impact on the youth of Montessorino and to work with the city council. I also want to learn more about how our government works and how youth can be more involved. Thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for coming, just in the nick of time. Yes. Okay. So, before we continue, let me recognize two members who are leaving this year. The first one is Manit Tripatham. And Manit, would you like to say a few words?
A few.
A few.
Honorable City Council of Montessorino, I stand before you today as chairman of the city's youth commission. Today marks the completion of five years of service, starting when I was in eighth grade, and as my term draws to a close, I would like to personally convey my thanks to the hard-working, dedicated commissioners to whom I owe a large amount of gratitude. Starting as but a humble commissioner in eighth grade, I have witnessed a lot in this city, the passage of a ban on e-cigarettes on public property, the election of the first South Asian to our city council, and the local tensions that have resulted from our housing dilemma. But most importantly, I have witnessed with awe what has been a rejuvenation in the hard work and determination this year from my fellow commissioners, a breathtaking alacrity for several, for service from my fellow council. We have accomplished great feats, unbeknownst to me, examples including Ariana, our co-chair, whose bold judgments started our hygiene drive that provided hundreds of sanitary products to low-income residents and students of Central Valley, giving them the chance of an education. Alex, who's pioneering a STEM program for low-income students, giving them the gift of science. Arushi, who represented Montessorino at the state level, meeting with Evan Low and the youth legislative courts. I have seen Savannah, who has reached out to Montessorino, providing us with local media coverage, and in fact, the facilities to tape the city council proceedings right now. Jessie, who has taken the initiative to design the commission logos, of which we humbly present to you before us today. I could go on and on. Ajay, Kate, McCoy, Paige, Emily, Jessica, the people sitting and standing here before us today, who are just right now, an hour ago, handing out ice cream to the city, to the people of the city, intermingling and communicating, expressing a desire within themselves to involve the youth in civil service. I have seen, unbeknownst to me, a level of youth involvement in politics I never thought would be possible, and truly, it has made my life all the more better and happier to have served with them. I come from very humble beginnings in eighth grade, but I stand before you today a very, very proud chairman. And as I leave to college, I would like to quote the honorable poet and writer Sadat Hassan Manto. Yesterday and tomorrow hold no interest for me. What happened had happened. What did and what will happen, will. And in that, I say to you that what will happen in my life will continue, but I will always have solemn and melancholy, but also happy memories of what has been my service on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Manit, did anybody tell you you should?
Sorry?
Did anybody tell you?
Thank you.
Did anybody tell you you should major in political science? Wait, wait, wait. But you're not done.
Wait, Mona, what are you majoring in?
Pay attention, Manit. Come here. But you're not done. So, then our next one is Jessie Liu.
For council members, I've only been here for one year, but I would say that I really enjoyed my experience. The commission's been wonderful to me, and I thank you for the experience.
Thank you so much. So, now let's move on to the exciting part. Okay? So, each council member here has had the opportunity to review all 15 applications prior to tonight's meeting. And we all think that you are all qualified and should be appointed to the positions, but let me check with them. We will take a vote. So, we want to appreciate the efforts and the values from the youth commission. You are an important part of the city, believe it or not, and certainly, your willingness to volunteer, your time and your effort, your willingness to speak up here, I know you guys are very shy, and you want to express your thoughts, your opinions, and you have contributed to being part of this community. So, now I would like to ask the council members to make comments, please, and I'll start with?
Sure.
Councilmember Labouvet.
Hey, so, Dan Labouvet, in case, I came to your meeting last week and tried to introduce myself. You guys are just rock stars. You guys are just doing a great job, and I was very, very impressed, and all future leaders, and very impressed with your applications, and I hope to have the pleasure of helping you serve the community in your role going forward. Thank you.
Yes, you're all, just an amazing group of young men and women and I'm really looking forward to seeing what you're going to do this next year and I'm just, I'm just happy to be a part of it. So thank you.
Councilmember Alahi.
I really want to thank all of you for applying. I mean, I looked at all your applications and to say that you guys are all amazing and outstanding would probably be, we're not saying enough. It doesn't quite cover it. And you know, just, just to show the breadth of what's coming in, the diversity that you guys bring in, from tall to short, from, from different religions, from different ethnicities, from different backgrounds, that itself is an output. What I was really impressed by is the breadth of volunteerism that you guys do. I mean, they looked at those applications, there are individuals in U of U who are serving on various school commissions, on global free ride, on committees for teens, on gifts on the run, for best buddies, serving as school representatives, they're serving in a Leo club, there's musical-minded individuals serving, you know, doing, on the Jazz Factor, individuals who are doing political talk shows on YouTube's, individuals who are serving on Bella Vista League Junior Auxiliary, the Los Gatos United Methodist Church you're volunteering for, Shero Stet, Dona Vista, Treasure, there's Treasure for Teens here who's applied, guitars not guns that you believe in, representative from the Girl Scouts, Global Education for Schools, there's a production manager who's doing a podcast for a school, someone who's interning for Rishi Kumar as a congressional candidate, there are youth commissioners on the Valley Water Board, on the Silicon Valley Energy Commission, somebody serving with the AAUV, moving against poverty, volunteering at Good Sam. I mean, it's just amazing the breadth of work that you guys are doing as volunteers. I mean, if we, if we had to go out and ask for somebody to apply for these things, we couldn't have found better candidates really. And we have asked for applying but even if this was a fully paid job, we couldn't have found a better candidate. We really appreciate what you're doing. Please keep it up. We are here to help you out in any way we can. We have, you know, two, there's two council members officially associated like with you but all of us are here. So please do not hesitate and those who are leaving us, you know, my name is Jessie, we wish you the best of luck. You've been outstanding and I think you've helped motivate this youth group in doing what they have done and hope that that continues and stay in touch with them, keep them motivated. All right? Thank you.
Okay, so since we've indicated that we would like to accept all the applicants, could I have a motion?
So moved.
To appoint all 15 applicants to the Montessori Youth Commission
So moved.
For 2019, 2020. Do I have a second?
A second?
And we, our stuff isn't working, so we'll take...
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember La Bueve?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, oh.
Passes four zero.
Okay, great. So I guess it gives us great pleasure to extend our warmest congratulations to all of you on your appointment as members of the Youth Commission for 2019 and 2020. Let's give everyone a big round of applause. Nobody's going to take a bow? Thank you so much. So we'll now move to our next order of business, which is Commission Reports. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on it?
Just started bringing up on the Silicon Valley Energy that I attended. There's apparently a grant for $10,000 towards green energy. I don't know if Terry had a chance to follow up on that or not, but if you can go ahead and contact them and see what that is all about and how we can also apply for their grant. I think it may have to do with Reach Coach or something else.
I will be following up on that, absolutely.
They had a deadline. It's not really a deadline. It's a soft deadline. They said it should be done by June something and when I asked them, June what? Is it the last day or what? So that's, I mean, they prefer to have taken care of by that. Legislative agenda from the energy point of view, there are some, there's questions on increasing rates for PG&E and as you may realize, the electricity that we get is from Silicon Valley energy and that's a green energy that's coming in. So if you see your bills, you might notice two things on there. One's charge for Silicon Valley energy and one is charge for PG&E. So PG&E is charging for transmission, the Silicon Valley energy is actually charging for the generation and now most of the energy is now green energy made out of electricity or wind turbines. So that's...
That's it? Anybody else? No? Okay, so let's move to council member comments. Are there any comments or anybody that wishes to speak at this point?
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Okay.
So I, you know, when I was campaigning, a couple of, well, several residents who live on private roads were, were questioning why they couldn't be part of the paving program and so I'm wondering if there is a discussion that we can have about potentially, since they are taxpayers and paying into the system, if there's some way that we could either subsidize or work out some sort of system with them to incorporate them into the, into the pavement management program.
Well, they are private streets, so the city has no responsibility for resurfacing them, repaving them or repairing them. But what I could say, might be possible unless Kirsten says otherwise, is say for example, with next year's pavement management program, it might be possible that they could, you know, take advantage of the fact that we're bringing in a contractor to work on the streets that the city's responsible for and that sometimes, you know, that might add an economy of a scale, you know, that would maybe lower the cost to them than having them do it just individually. They, they would have to, you know, make their own contract and, and, you know, have their own arrangement directly with them. But it, you know, it's something we could certainly investigate on their behalf.
Yeah, I'd like to. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you know of any one in particular, just encourage them to reach out to me. That would be, I'd be happy to talk with them.
I have one in particular.
Yeah.
Probably have to introduce myself when that issue comes up. We're on a private street. I was across my houses in the county. It is private and there's a few houses that are now in the city. It'd be interesting to take a look at it, obviously, order on it or anything else like that, but I think it's a poor organization because of fire issues.
I was just going to say, so each private street is, is a different situation. We don't know. There might have been reasons why at the time of the subdivision, the roadway was not accepted. My suspicion is for your particular situation, because it's multi-jurisdictional, there's no one jurisdiction that would have full rights to that roadway, so that's why it had to remain as a private street. So we would have to look at each street individually, but typically it is a private street, so the property owners are responsible for maintaining that on their own. That might have been a decision of the original divider or it could have been a decision of the council at the time the subdivision was approved. We'd have to go back and look. Is that something that could possibly be changed if they are actually drive-through streets? So if they've offered it for dedication and it's an irrevocable offer, the city can accept it, but with that comes increased cost, liability, depending on the current state of the road, it may not meet current standards, so that could require an obligation to upgrade it. So it's a much larger discussion, but it is something that we can, we can look into. Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested in that because I'm in the same situation as, as Councilmember Alahi.
And it wouldn't change, for those of you that are on multi-jurisdictional streets, it's not going to change for you because even if we accepted it in, those that are in the city limits, it would only give us the right to improve that portion in front of your house, but right next door to you wouldn't be improved. So they would be unlikely that you're going to spend money to improve kind of a patchwork of a street, but those streets that are fully within the city limits could be something that we would look into.
That works for me. If you can get it to my house. But anyway.
Okay.
That's good. Thank you for bringing that up.
So anybody else with comments? I have a comment and I, I guess what I wanted to bring, bring up was the issue about participating in the Easter egg hunt, which we've participated for six years, and also the Christmas parade, the Christmas holiday parade that the council, the Youth Commission as well as the council members have participated in. One of the, the comments that we got from our legal counsel here is it would be inappropriate to fund or participate in religious activities. So I wanted to make sure that we take a look at that for our next funding round, June, June 4th, to make sure that, you know, we, we look at it from the entire council's perspective. Anything else? Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, no.
No? Okay. So let's now move to the city manager's report.
I actually have most everyone left, but I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out for this to help celebrate the city's 62nd anniversary and to also to, to take a look at the new little free library, which we've just installed and encourage everyone to take a book and leave a book so that we can, you know, have some circulation going through it. I think it's a great thing that we've added as a service to the community. And that's all I had for tonight.
Thank you. So now we'll have future agenda items? Future agenda items, yes. Councilmember La Bueve.
I have two items. So maybe just a little bit of an introduction. As part of open and public government and enforced by the Brown Act, except for limited circumstances, city councils only allowed to discuss topics that are included on the agenda of a publicly noticed meeting. On February 19th, 2019, the city council amended Resolution 1691.5 to allow city council members to add agenda items and suggest future agenda items with the timing to be determined in consultation with the city manager. I was present when this resolution was passed, but you know, as I reflected on it further, I really didn't agree with this piece of the language. I think it's very important that city council members are able to discuss and progress topics of interest on an equal footing and therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we revisit this resolution and modify the language from, with the timing to be determined in consultation with the city manager based on an orderly placement of the items for consideration to something along the lines of the city manager may advise but cannot override on the placement of items for consideration.
So we can't do a motion because it's not on the agenda?
Yes.
But we could bring the resolution back and at that time, talk about potential changes.
And I, and I think that the mayor is also, you had some interest in possibly putting forth some other changes as well, correct?
Yes, to diverse, yes, yes.
Right, so, so what I would suggest we do is to, to, you know, collect what those might be and then to bring that back at a later date.
Okay.
My impression was that you were just going to advise, not overrule the...
That is correct. I mean, the, the role that, as I explained at the, at the time, and, and this is not meant to, you know, pass any sort of judgment on this particular piece of the guidelines and regulations, but I, I know of no other city that has such a provision and part of that has to do with, you know, part of the city manager's job is to manage the workflow and to, you know, determine priorities and so forth. So, so that if, you know, if, if that is a part of the regulations and guidelines and, and if the council is definitely wants to invoke that, which the, the new group has definitely been doing that, then I, I as a city manager need some method to, you know, work in concert with the city council. So it's not intended to thwart anything or to slow anything. It's just, you know, it's working as a, as a co-partner in the process of putting things on the agenda and so forth and that was my intention, as I explained at the time.
And I, I would second that. I mean, I think that it's just, it's important that the city council be able to discuss items.
The city attorney's going to remind us that we're making this an agenda item, so we need to stop talking about it.
So we can, we'll bring it back and we can talk about the merits of any changes.
And you can just put this on the future agenda items, that list that we have, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, you have a second one?
I have second item and so because there's not enough work to do, I would like to add a little more work for myself and perhaps a partner. I would like to make a motion to form an ad hoc committee to review customer orientation and operational excellence for city services and suggest improvements based on common and best practices. For example, define and promote common vision, key values, strategic plan, thorough transparent status and operations reporting, efficient tracking and processing of resident issues and work plans, soliciting resident feedback, performance review on metrics-based achievement and net promoter scores, independent process audits.
We won't, we won't be able to, to make a motion to my...
Right.
We'll certainly put this on the...
So I, I mean, this is, this is, this is really for, you know, to open this up. If you guys, if the rest of the council members are open to such a suggestion in an ad hoc committee, I'd be willing to lead this committee and, and work on these items.
So we'll work with Councilmember La Bueve to make that succinct and come up with what the ad, the ad hoc subcommittee would be and bring it back for council consideration.
Okay. Okay, great. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I think I brought it before on the Veterans Ad Hoc Committee. I think that should be formed, so that should be on the next agenda.
Well, for the next meeting is the budget workshop and my preference would be, I mean, actually adding an ad hoc committee can be a pretty short item, so it's possible that it could be the next meeting, but we do have two, two, two more meetings before the summer break.
No, just one more, right?
Right, two more from tonight.
Oh, two more from tonight.
This thing has been going on for the last six months, so if they had a committee appointed and then they can, the head can decide who three it was to proceed to whatever.
Anyone else? Going once? Okay, so I guess that's it for tonight. Our next meeting is June 4th at 7:00 here at City Hall. Since there's no further business, let me move to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned.